All right, let's call the council meeting to order for tonight if we can all rise to pledge, uh, say the pledge of allegiance. During roll call, we have all council members present. Do we have anyone for public comment? Hearing done, we'll move to adopt the agenda.
Mayor, this evening, we do have an addition to the agenda. It is business item K eight. There is an A and B, two resolutions, and this is a warring bid for the city hall roof replacement.
Motion to approve with the addition.
Second.
All right, I have a motion from Councilman Merrill and a second from Councilman Lundin. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries five zero. Uh, let's see. Do I have a motion to approve the council meeting minutes from April fourth, twenty twenty-three?
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilman Lundin and a second from Councilman Heeman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries five zero. Uh, for announcements, uh, we have a park, rec, and culture on April twenty-fifth at six P M. We have the budget workshop at five P M. on May second, I believe, right? Okay. Uh, city council at seven P M. on May second and E D A, uh, on May second as well, immediately following the city council meeting. Do we have any council committee reports? All right, uh, moving on to public hearings, uh, J one, development agreement with Wolf River Electric.
Good evening, um, mayor and council. Uh, tonight we have the development agreement with Wolf River Electric. Um, city staff met with, um, Mr. Nielsen, um, who is here tonight to discuss his plans moving forward with the expansion of Wolf River Electric. Um, he stated his needs, um, that he would like to start building on both parcels immediately or as soon as possible, um, to expand now as his business is growing. And it would also help him provide a cost savings to build both at once versus one and then the next. Um, based upon our discussion, we revise the attached development agreements to be consistent with what is needed, um, to continue the expansion and also while keeping them accountable for a timeframe. So we adjusted the timeframe to one year, um, on these development agreements and, um, that's what we recommend. If you'd like to have Mr. Nielsen come to the front, he is here to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing now. If anybody would like to speak on this matter, please come forward. Uh, we just need your name and address there.
Uh, Justin Nielsen, one oh one, Isani Parkway, Nuthy. Uh, yeah, so, uh, as we spoke last, um, as of last Thursday, we got locked in. They purchased sixteen point six seven percent of, uh, Wolf River, and so we've had a large cash injection. Um, as of this morning, I just wanted to confirm with, um, the lender where we're at the buildings, and he said, um, we'll be able to break ground in six weeks. So I wanted to bring you guys something short, clear cut, you know, you've been really good to us, and so I'm hoping that we'll be able to pull this thing off and breaking ground in six weeks.
Awesome. Any questions for Justin? Well, we got him up here.
What was, what was the square footage on the two buildings that you, that you're gonna go with?
Total of thirty-two, but there is quite a bit of outdoor storage, and then it leaves enough space to put up a third on the back end where there is the, um, there's the strip, you know, between the railroad tracks and current one oh one parking lot, and so it'd be, it'd be a great way to utilize all the space for bringing semis in and out. Um, yeah, we're really excited.
All right. Thank you, Justin. Uh, anybody else would like to speak on this matter?
I just have one question. I was just, why the smaller buildings? You need the out, the outside storage for, for equipment and vehicles and...
Yeah, so, um, so right now, the way these buildings are set up, right, I'm not sure if, uh, uh, if you've driven past our current building. Right now, everything that's outside of the building is all of ours, right? And so it's, it's a large portion of what we do is, is staging, um, staging trucks, loading up trailers, getting that ready for certain crews to come in, take that, and then head out, um, as well as space for new equipment such as boon lifts. Um, we're gonna have Moffett trucks, semis, and we need to be able to have space to pull in, pull out, and then have our, for the, for the delivery trucks to pull in, pull out, and then have a turnaround room for our crews to come in with their trailers, get loaded up, and then come out. Um, so a good example, this and I talked with, um, uh, Josie and Steph a little bit about it. I'm not sure if you guys remember the Pat Small Engine Building. Um, so that specific building is one they were looking at like five years ago before we bought this one. And the, the building was so designed so custom, right? I'm not sure if you've seen it. It's very custom all the way through, right? And so a big reason why the bank didn't want us to go for that building is because it was so, such a specific, such a niche thing, that there's no way anybody could come into something so intricate and have it fit and work for them properly. This is something to where as our needs change and as our needs, you know, grow differently, um, this is pretty clean-cut, precise, and we'll be able to use it, you know, it's, it's not custom. It's very, it's fit for accommodation for a lot of traffic and a lot of in on out, you know? So that's, that's why we picked these, you know? Our needs today might be different from two years from now, but the main thing is that we have the space, and we have, we're not limiting ourselves to designing something like super intricate, you know what I mean? Like today, for example, we sold five roofing projects, you know, so now we're doing roofing, you know what I mean? So it's like the needs are changing all the time, so this is a way for us to not limit ourself to a specific design, like, cause we could build a forty thousand square foot building, but it would be something that would be a waste of space and not applicable as soon as we pivot, and now we're doing a lot more roofing as well as solar, you know what I mean?
Well, congratulations on your next adventure.
Appreciate that. Appreciate what the city's done. They're nothing but good to us, so.
All right. Anybody else would like to speak on this? We'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Do we have any discussion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion to approve from Councilman Lundin, a second from Councilman Collison. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries five zero. Moving on to business items, K one, the Isani County Beyond the Yellow Ribbon Presentation.
Mayor and council members, um, Jim Rosberg, uh, Chair of the Isani County Beyond the Yellow Ribbon. I want to say it's an honor to be here again. This is our first time making a presentation to this council since the election, and congratulations, mayor, and congratulations, council members. I have a few things I'd like to distribute. I'm just gonna take a minute, step over and hand these to you.
Okay. Thank you, Jim.
Sorry.
You're fine.
Thank you, thank you.
Uh, I, what we gave you is, um, what we're working on right now. I also want to say that in the audience with this, we have, I want to make sure one of ours didn't come in. Okay, we have Gail Janet. She's our fundraising coordinator, and Kathy Rosberg, my wife, she's our treasurer. We have two major fundraisers a year, uh, one in the, in the fall at, uh, it's a golf tournament and, uh, at Purple Hawk, and then one in the spring called, uh, our dinner dance, and that's what I, one of the things I handed to you. And, uh, that's coming up a week from Saturday. It's at the, uh, Cambridge Armed Forces Reserve and Community Center. It's, uh, the twenty-ninth of April. It starts at, uh, four thirty in the afternoon for the happy hour and then five thirty for a wonderful dinner. With the money that we make from, from these two, uh, turn, uh, these two fundraisers, plus the donations that we get from the community, from businesses and individuals, we have been able to, in last year, twenty twenty-two, give out over fifty-four thousand dollars to over three hundred and seventy people from Isani County. That includes the service members and the veterans and their families that are in need, financial need. We don't just hand out money. They, they go through, they're, they're vetted first, so if it's a veteran in the community, they go to the Isani County Veteran Service Office, and they, they look at all the different programs that are available for that individual person. And if it falls through, it cracks a little bit, they, they just can't get them, they don't have the resource to do it or don't have a program for them, then they come back to us. And so we're like a safety net. We're, and, and it's a pretty impressive safety net to have given out that much money to that many people when there's other programs they look at first. We're in our fourteenth year as, uh, designated as a, as a Beyond the Yellow Ribbon County. That's really, really good. Some of the things I, uh, say is we, we give money to, or we, I should say, we help to pay for things like mortgages when somebody is having a hard time, car payments, uh, rent, um, fuel, um, L P tanks when they get low in the winter and help out, uh, food and sending packages to the troops that are deployed, uh, all kinds, just about anything you can think of. If there's a need and if we can help and if there, uh, we, we do. I don't know what else. Uh, there's, uh, I mean, we've been here before, so you've probably heard this except for the new council members, but do you have any questions? Uh, that, I think it's important to see if there's any questions that you might have about what we do or what we've done or, or what we plan to do. We plan to be around for a long time. We're, we're not going anywhere. It's not like, you know, we have, we're, uh, we're doing well enough so that we have enough money to cushion, so that when there's a need comes up, it isn't like we have to go out and try to figure out how to raise the money. So we can turn on a dime, and we've done it. When soldiers are deploying early on in our program, it was a cold winter day, and before they got on the bus, uh, somebody came up to us and said that this one particular soldier that was deploying, he was leaving behind his wife and, pregnant wife and some children, and before they left that morning from their home, their furnace wasn't working. We were able to make, uh, make it work, working with the local contractors. By the time that soldier got down to the cities and called back, his furnace was fixed and working. Um, we had another time where the, uh, husband and wife, there, it was Christmas Eve. It was cold. They were keeping their house warm with their oven, and, and we, again, working with local contractors, had them out there, and the re, what's nice about our program is we, I, I believe we built up enough respect in the community that we don't have to write a check before they go. You know, we can call them up and say we need this, and they go and do it because they know we're gonna be good for it. So that helps save a lot of time, and it save, uh, helps, uh, helps a lot. I don't want to take up too much time. Uh, is there anything I, you want me to throw in? Oh, yeah, we, we do, yeah. We also, part of the funding that we do from the, the, um, uh, the fundraiser in the fall with the golf tournament, part of that money goes to a scholarship program, and for those people who are in Isani County that are, meet the criteria, and by the way, it, it doesn't have to be a traditional student. It can be a non-traditional student. You might have a, a, a veteran, a veteran spouse, who might be fifty, sixty years old, wants to go back to school. We'd love to be able to give a scholarship to something like that. Usually the scholarships are going to those that are graduating from the schools. We have eight different schools that we look at that are, it's not just Isani, Cambridge Isani. It's also Princeton's, uh, St. Francis', um, Ogilvy, Bram, uh, so we have, uh, and also in the southeastern part. So we have a number of, uh, we draw upon a number of schools, and we've been able to give out good scholarships over the years. We've already had the scholarship is, is closed for this year. We already have the four students that are going to be presented on Thursday night at our task force meeting. They're gonna get, they're gonna, um, be announced that and introduced to the task force that night, so. It, the families will be there with their children or if that's, unless they're an adult, and, um, so that's another, another program we've got going. With that, I'm gonna end, unless you have any questions at all.
Jim, I want to say one thing. I've known you for many years. I have a lot of veteran family members, and from bottom of my heart, I want to say thank you for all you guys do.
Congressman Lundin, thank you very much. Uh, on the side, I'll call you Steve, but Councilman Lundin. So thank you very much for, for those kind words.
Yes, I, I think our veterans suffer a lot more than most people think, and I, I want to thank this program for what they do for the veterans.
We have a, a great task force with some very active people that work very, very hard to get this, these things accomplished, so thank you very much for those kind words.
What is the, uh, the date and how do people sign up for the, the golf? Is it a scramble?
Yeah, it's scramble, yes, and, uh, we will be sending information out. It's, is it the third Saturday?
It's September fifteenth.
Sep, Friday, yeah, September fifteenth. Third Friday, third Friday of September. It'll, there will be, um, we'll have the, um, Cambridge American Legion color guard will bring out the flag at right about, uh, noon or a little before noon. There'll be, uh, and we'll get started, and then there will, yes, there will be the, uh, what'd you call it? These scramble, yes. Uh, I'm not a golfer, so the scramble. Yeah, everybody, um, has a great time. They all, all have a great time, and the weather so far has been really good. So hopefully it continues that trend and we continue to have good weather, so hope to see you there.
You guys have a website?
We do.
Okay, what is it?
I never, I go to it, but I don't, is that...
Isaniveteran.org?
That's it.
Okay.
Yeah, right there in the, on the brochure, uh, on this right here, and on the, on the brochure, yes.
Okay.
Uh, I think you have everything you need and contact information, so if there's anything you need, don't feel, you know, don't hesitate to contact any one of us, so. Any other questions? With that, I, I'd like to thank you very much for this opportunity to come before the council and, uh, let you know what we do.
We're glad to, we're glad to have you, and, and, uh, what I really like about what you do too is that you take care of the families that are left behind, cause I mean, I think, you know, I have a buddy that's, uh, that, you know, he was deployed recently and that you just, he's got little kids, and I mean, I just think about the time that you miss away from that, those kids, there's only, you don't get that time back, you know, and so it's, it's to, to have you guys there to help take care of things when there's issues that come up. I mean, that's huge, and I'm sure it's really, really appreciated, and, uh, you guys do a, a, awesome work, and I, we definitely want to thank you for, for that work that you do.
We're all in it together.
That's for sure.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, uh, moving on to K two, a resolution to consider approving special event permit for Walk for Life.
Yeah, good evening, mayor and council. Uh, so we have a special event, uh, permit application from the Pregnancy Resource Center of Cambridge. Uh, they'll be holding, holding their annual Walk for Life event on, uh, May twentieth, two thousand twenty-three. It'll take place on the C I bike walk trail, and it'll end in Bluebird, Bluebird Park. Um, the event, um, will also be using the pavilion during that time. Um, they've completed a temporary sign application, and, uh, they, approximately thirty to fifty people will be in attendance. Uh, no, no additional restrooms will be required. There'll be enough in the park already from what our standard stuff is. Um, and it's a similar request they've made in the past, so.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion to approve from Councilman Lundin and a second from Councilman Merrill. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries five zero. Uh, let's see, K three, resolution to consider approving special event permit for Isani Firefighters Rodeo Association.
Good evening, mayor and council. I am here to represent the rodeo association. I am guessing you've reviewed in your packets our application to host a fundraiser at our rodeo grounds in August. Um, simply put, a music concert, uh, so we seek your approval to consider allowing us to host that.
So I have a question on there. Um, in the, uh, permit application, there was a blank for the maximum number of tickets available, and that was left blank. Was that accidental or intentional, or you just don't know?
Excuse me. So there's a little confusion on my part. Um, we have several different, um, expectations, hopes, uh, target goals for our tenants. Um, I spoke with Chief Myers today from the police department, and he explained to me a little better definition of what he is looking for as far as attendance-wise, so he can prepare for his staffing. So I think if we were to use the number of seven thousand, which I'm guessing is, uh, a very high number, but that would be our, our best-case scenario. Uh, that is about the maximum that we host during our rodeo. The grounds will be laid out a little bit different for this event, so we could actually probably host more because we would be using the, uh, arena area for pedestrians or people to stand and watch the concert. So that being said, we could probably host more, but I don't see us attracting more than our rodeo crowd at all. So I think if we were to fill in the blank of seven thousand, that would give us plenty of room and cushion. And I, I, uh, explained to the chief today that if we could work out some communication, maybe we could respond or talk every so often about how our pre-sales are doing, so he could maybe have some sort of an idea of what's coming. But we do expect, uh, a fair amount of our sales to be at the gate as well, which is pretty tough to predict, weather and other activities, et cetera. It could be tough.
Sure. And then I had another question. The, uh, the, the deposit fee for the, the hundred fifty dollar deposit fee is asking to be waived?
Correct.
Okay, so if, if something were to happen, would, would the, would you guys just take care of it? Like if, say if the, the grass got messed up, would you guys automatically take care of that, or are we responsible for that, or?
Yes, we would definitely take care of it. We have in the past. Um, damage from cars parking on grass is not unheard of, and we have taken care of that to the best of my, my knowledge of the city's expectations in the past. So we hope to continue that, I guess, a handshake.
Do you know what the average age of, is of the people that go to those, that concert? I'm, I'm just curious.
I don't, but I've been to quite a few of their concerts in the past, and there's been people there as young as two years old. The music they play, I believe, is, is mostly a eighties, nineties hairband to older people. So, I mean, it's not a, it's kind of a mixed bag. Um, but I would say a median age, my gut would be thirties.
Is there more than one band?
There is. Yeah, we have an opening act, and then the headliner or the main act would be Airball.
Who's the opening act? Do you know?
Hmm.
Matty, Matty Braun?
There you go. That sounds right. Thank you, sir.
Uh, Matty Braun, I think is her name.
Oh, okay, okay. Um...
And then, are you, are you, don't care if I go?
It's a mi, I know you, I, I know the policy, dude. Is, is that policy adequate enough for that amount of people? Is that what we normally require at, at rodeo events too?
Well, I don't know if we have a policy with our protocols, what we've been doing as far as, like I explained to Al, is if we add seven thousand people to our population, it would double our population for those twelve hours or whatever that event is. So from a public safety standpoint, we had to prepare for what can happen, right? I mean, then, which we do at the rodeo, and we staff the rodeo. I know it's a similar but different. I mean, similar meaning that it's the same venue, the, the, the issues we have there with, uh, disorderly alcohol consumption type stuff, but we don't know what this crowd's gonna bring. They have their own security. The only issues they have with that security is last year, we had many of the firefighters come to us and tell us how horrible they were, and, uh, when the big brawl took out on the dance floor, we were getting calls. I think we had three firefighters call our direct lines and nine one one so we can go in there with seven officers to try to contain that. So that's the type of issues that we need to deal with, even though there's already a security company there. Um, so for us to not have any idea how many people are gonna be there would be really challenging.
It is.
Um, on how to staff that. Now, you approved the twenty twenty-three budget, and in there, there's a line item for rodeo to subsidize, uh, funding for paying those officers in there, but we didn't know this was coming up here, so there's no subsidizing that in this budget either. So that's another thing, you know, after this event permit goes through, that we'll have to discuss with council on how you want to proceed with that. How do ti, how do cities typically do that? I mean, I, if you have, if you have an event like in Minneapolis where there's a speaker coming and they want a police presence or they think they need a police presence, I mean, how, how is that typically handled and, you know? I mean, it, it depends on where you're, like, you know, like, we, last year, we, we provided services up at the fairgrounds and, you know, they paid for their service. So I mean, it's one or the other. You're either gonna subsidize it all, or you don't subsidize any of it. You know, I mean, it wouldn't be fair to have certain groups to be subsidized and not groups, other groups not be subsidized by tax dollars. It just really kind of depends on the city. Well, it depends on the council. If the co, but my recommendation would be is either do it all or you don't do any, you know? Um, so the same example is if you subsidize it all, that's fine, but when, when, uh, the fair comes in, we should give them the same courtesy as well as subsidizing our services up there with taxpayers' dollars out of Isani. Well, usually the, usually the county takes care of that at the county fair, but, but last year was kind of a, I, I think they're... They weren't available. Yeah.
I guess from a city perspective, I see it as I don't want to put out any money out of the city taxpayer dollars that's not done by the city. You know, I mean, we're gonna have to pay, I mean, it sounds minor, but electricity for the lights, the, those are always on, and they have to pay for the officer's time out there. I mean, I would like to see these events cover the costs so that the city taxpayers aren't having to pay it because not everybody from the city is gonna use the service, use the event, you know?
I think the rodeo, the rodeo grounds lights, I think, are, they're your lights, right?
Correct, yes, yep.
But it's electricity there still.
But on the flip side, it, it does generate money for all the fire departments. So I mean, it's, it's less of a, in a way, it could be less of a city expense.
Exactly. The, the rodeo association's a nonprofit entity, and its sole purpose is to raise funds for the fire department, which in turn lessens our obligation, financial obligation to all the people that own us. We also like to, or we hope that it generates revenue for city business. It also adds to the camaraderie through the city. They're probably the same reason why you host street dances. I'm not here to try to talk you into, into this, but that's our mindset. We're not out here to, to earn money for personal gain. It's solely for the rodeo association, which only supports the fire department, so that's my soapbox.
Okay.
I think, uh, we'd probably get that money back on the flip side.
But from, do you think we get that money back from all events though? Cause like Travis was saying, we should either subsidize all of it or not, none of it. So I, I mean, to be fair, I mean, I think it'd be easier if we were to say, I mean, say if we need one officer there all night and it's a eight-hour event, to have a compensation to offset that cost. It'd be fair for every single event because otherwise, say if, if one of us were to hold some sort of party and we wanted this, we got a permit for it, we wanted the city to police it, would that be fair for the residents to have to pay that police time?
Are, are those nonprofit events, or are they for-profit events?
Right, I mean...
I mean, if they're nonprofit events and they benefit the city and, and city personnel, I, I don't know. How many of them are, are nonprofits of these events you're talking about that happen within the city?
Well, there's nothing to that magnitude, obviously.
Right.
Yeah, and there's some that are for-profit that we do charge, you know, like the wedding venues and, and so forth, where their liquor license, and that's in city code as far as what we can charge them.
I think we're talking apple oranges on this one.
Okay.
I don't disagree with it, Councilman Heeman. It's a nonprofit organization, excuse me. Um, you don't realize the, the rodeo association puts a lot of money back into the fire district, which in turn costs us as an entity of the fire district, less money. So money that they get for this might pay for outfitting a truck with tools that probably would cost us over the year's time, five, six, seven, eight thousand dollars. So that officer for one night, I'll tell you what, I've paid for his wages than paying that five, six, seven dollars.
Kind of what I'm thinking.
I, I agree, but like Travis said, if we're gonna have a policy for one, we have to adopt it for everybody type thing, so. I mean, it's, it's just an example. What if someone were to come in and want to have an event and they wanted the P D. there for an event of a similar size or similar stature? I mean, are we gonna say that that's free for them to have P D., or should we make a policy for that?
Here's, one night to look at this. The fire district is part of the city of Isani. Is that other organization part of the city of Isani? I don't think so.
Sure.
Go pack and look at what the city of Isani's contribution is to the fire district every year, and if you can save five thousand dollars off of that by letting them have a, a special event, I guarantee you, you're gonna let them have that special event and let them have that officer.
I'm, I'm definitely not against that.
That's what I'm seeing is, this is, it's a di, it's a different situation.
It is.
Completely different situation. My... Completely different situation, Mike, yep.
So from an accounting finance perspective and 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 how the state auditor's office would interpret this is, they would say two things is. One is is that if you're, if you subsidize an event with police work like that, that it is like an implicit donation, right? There's, right, and so there should be two things. There's one, the council should understand what they're doing. I think that's clear, that that's occurred. The other would be is is that the the state auditor's office would say is, well, the council ought to identify a public good. That if this is a broadly shared public good, then it would be, it it can be, if the council chooses it, be appropriate use. Whereas and Luke, in your examples, if if I say, if I wanna, if I live down the street and I wanna have a party, a giant, I just wanna have the biggest party that ever was. It would be very difficult to declare that as a public good broadly felt. Whereas again, here, I think it seems a little more, at least a little more clear, right? That we can identify how there might be a a public good that is shared broadly. That would be the threshold and and I, as strange as it is, it ultimately ends up being, did the council decide that there was a public good? There's not, there's no hard fast rule on how you decide that it's, did five council members agree that there's a public good?
I guess I would, I would say that I would, I would motion that we accept this and consider it as a public good. That way we're clarifying ourselves and making it pretty transparent, I mean, what the situation is.
I second that motion.
It's, yeah, I mean, it's a lot, you know, like say uh. Is any BMX having a national here, it brings a lot of people into town and they spend their money in town. This is, this can have the same scenario.
Might sell some more houses. It's the right, it's the right crowd to bring up here to look around and say, hey, I wanna move here, hey, I wanna build here.
It's a fun town.
Because they're gonna be coming from everywhere.
Perfect opportunity for the city to have some flyers up there too for our street dances and stuff to get them to come back. We would appreciate that.
So I guess I'll make that a formal motion.
I'll second.
All right, I have a motion to approve the special event permit from councilman Lundine and a second from councilman Heeman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries five zero.
I think you need to stress then, uh, with whoever's doing the secretaries on this, is that it is for a.
Public good.
Public good.
Nonprofit.
Nonprofit public good.
I agree.
Cause I mean, that's, I understand where Luke's coming from. Everybody will come in and say, I want you to do this. Well, there's a difference. I mean, the city is actually benefiting from this as, and the residents are benefiting from it. Because it is taking a tax burden off of them with the donations that the relief association puts into the ci- to the to the district itself.
Even though we're not getting a cut, we're getting a cut.
I also wanna clarify to make sure that we're gonna leave it at the maximum number of tickets is seven thousand. And whereas you'll communicate with the Isani police chief to inform the status of ticket sales. Just to ensure proper police presence can accommodate. And then.
Agreed.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief.
All right, moving on to K four, resolution to consider approving a special event permit for Rum River Rats.
All right, so yeah, Rum River Rats is set to hold their thirteenth annual summer spectacular car show in downtown Isani. On Main Street on Saturday, August twelfth, two thousand twenty-three. Uh, the event will take place between ten and three, or ten AM, three PM. Estimated number of three hundred to five hundred people will be in attendance. The applicant will not be required to provide additional restrooms for the event. Due to portable restrooms being in place for the street dance that will be happening later that same evening. There will be road enclosures necessary on Main Street West from the railroad tracks to Fourth Avenue. As well as First Avenue South from Broadway to Main. Second Avenue Southwest from the alley north of Broadway to Faith Ave- uh, Faith Lutheran Church. And then Third Avenue Southwest from the alley north of Broadway to Faith Lutheran Church. It's a been a re- recurring event and we kind of partner with them on doing the street dance the same night so that downtown that day is kind of jam packed with activities, so.
I think they've done a great job in all these years that they've done it, um, so I make a motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion to approve from councilman Lundine and a second from councilman Merrill. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries five zero. Uh, moving on to K five, the Park Brook Apartments.
Good evening again, um, mayor and council. Before you is a PUD for the Park Brook Apartments as well as a. Comprehensive plan amendment and zoning amendment for um, to. Transition the lot from uh, commercial to our for residential, sorry, I've been trying to help here, so. And the keepers construction is the one requesting, um, making this request and the planning commission did. Approve to recommend this, both items to move forward. If you have any further questions, I know we talked about it some and um, he had presented, but he's still here if you have any further questions.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion to approve from councilman Collison and a second from councilman Lundine. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries five zero.
I just wanted to add one thing on this, with construction right now. Multiple family homing homes and apartments. Or condominiums of such, that is the only thing that's being built right now anywhere. Very, very few single family homes are being built. And I've been doing this a long time and it's pretty rare to see that happening like it is right now. There is, I don't, I I don't look, but I've been told in the uh, foreclosure section of the paper, there is a lot of foreclosures. It's like two or three pages long now. These people need a place to live and as soon as this thing gets built, they're gonna at least stay in the community.
That um, the motion was to approve both resolutions A and B.
Yes. And for my first motion, whoever seconded, you seconded it, Dan? Oh, I seconded it? I don't know who seconded it. I don't remember, I'm getting old, dude. I don't remember. Whatever, yeah.
A A and B.
Thank you.
Yeah, we're looking forward to that. Uh, K six, resolution to consider purchase of bathroom kit for Bluebird Park Splash Pad Project.
Uh, good evening, so um, with our splash pad project, part of that is um, putting in a permanent bathroom in Bluebird Park. Uh, so we've been researching different options of what kind of bathroom we can put in there. So I have a variety of different quotes and I have an additional quote that I passed out uh, before the start of the meeting. And we'll get to that in a minute, but basically um. What we were finding was the the prefab kits um, were more expensive than the other option we found to have a a wooden structure built. I know we talked about wanting a a concrete or block structure. But the the cost was more prohibitive than than going in a different direction as well. Uh, councilman Lundine was wanting to have a bathroom where um, he could supply the plumbing fixtures uh, through the company he worked for. And so we got a quote from Minnesota Wisconsin Playground, uh, it's the same company that we got the kit for the. Amphitheater from a couple of years ago, um, and so they do also bathroom structures. Uh, so the first one we got from them, um, detailed. The kit itself, uh, the concrete slab and foundation and then installation cost. And so then Luke, you had some questions on what the specs were on the concrete, so we went back and forth uh, with Minnesota Wisconsin Playground. Got those specs back, um, had time to review that with um, Matt Small, the building official. As well as Josh Becker from Public Works, who has a concrete background. And they both were kind of an ingredients that the the foundation that was laid out. In that spec was maybe a little bit overkill, um, and so they, uh, Matt Small would be okay with if we went that route. Just going to what the code requires, so we would have potentially some cost savings there and then. You know, the option that we added here tonight was to just purchase the kit. Which is just the material and then we could bid out the. Uh, a local company to do the concrete work and and assemble the kit, so.
So on that, um, so I just wanted to give the council a background on that. Uh, I had asked about the the slab and the the footings because the the number just seemed really high. And uh, the plan was a four foot deep footing, which is, I think, totally overkill for a a bathroom structure. So I was, I had talked to Josie about potentially doing a floating slab with a twelve by twelve uh, thickened perimeter. Um, and then border insulation with rigid foam to keep the frost from permeating. And that could save us probably twenty to thirty thousand dollars versus what's proposed here, so that's why I brought that up. So I'm happy to hear that you guys looked into that and I think it's a good way to save some money without losing any real.
Right, so the only caveat, uh, it's, you know, totally up, just so you guys are aware, that the the company said, you know, if if you were to deviate from what the plans we provide. If there was something that happened structurally to the the unit, you know, if you didn't build it to what specs we had stamped and engineered. Um, that you'd be, you know, on the hook completely for anything that would happen, cause it was, wasn't built to their specs. So that's just something to keep in mind if that's the route you wanna go, so.
Just so you know, a floating slab will shift. And the reason you have four foot footings is to get below the frost line.
Yep.
The reason you get below the frost line is so the building doesn't shift and crack.
Correct.
Floating slab will crack.
Unless you do the rigid foam.
Still will crack.
Well, that's what, that's what it approved by code in a lot of areas, including Isani County. A floating slab is approved with a, with the border insulation, I mean, it's just.
You can do all you want, say all you want, I'm gonna guarantee you, I don't care what you do, it's gonna crack.
Okay.
I've been doing it for a long time.
Our garage, our garage is built in nineteen ninety-two with that style, cause that's what the city code said in nineteen ninety-two. There's not a single crack on that thing and it's thirty years old. So if you do it right, it can last just as long and the 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 four foot footings on a twenty by twenty-four foot bathroom is is way overkill. So I mean, if it saves us, it could save us twenty-five, thirty grand. So it's just something to look into it for consideration.
I guess if we went that route, if we did put out the bid, we could, you know, you could do an alternate for the, what they specked out and then what we think would be the bare minimum.
I think that's a good idea. Then we have options, so if, I mean, if we can save a substantial amount of money and still have a product that lasts. Oh, but it'll last longer than the building if it's done right, so. So I'll make a motion to uh, approve it and to get uh, two different bids for the the floating slab type with the, of course, the. The twelve inch thickened edges or whatever, whatever the.
Yeah, Matt, Matt Small said he would look into what it, what the um, what the minimum requirements would be. He'd, he'd be happy to figure that out for us and then, yeah, if we do the spec for what they provide and then with the alternate. I think that would be a, at least a good option. I did talk to one local contractor uh, that um, was interested if we did put it out for bid that he would be interested in in bidding on it, so.
I think you should put it out for three bids, I think that should be a minimum requirement anyway.
I agree, I I know a couple as well.
I just know, I just in brief conversation, it was, it's all happened within the last day or two here, getting this last minute information, so. I mean, I just reached out to one person and they were, they expressed interest, so I think. Talking to to Matt Sylvester, the last time when they did the amphitheaters, there wasn't a lot of interest and people weren't interested in doing this kit from this company. They wanted to be able to just frame it themselves, but now that the amphitheater was up and I think people can look at it and, you know, it's not that complicated. And it, I think they said they, they don't think there would be a problem finding people interested in bidding on it, cause it wasn't that complex to to put up the amphitheater, so.
Yeah, I would like to get more, as many options as we can for the whole thing, I mean, if we can save money, that's that's the number one.
I'd just like to clarify that you're making a motion to purchase the. Materials only and then um, the kit with materials only and then go to bid for the rest of it?
I would say, I would say that we can do it an option if they wanna put the kit together or, you know, so we have the cost of the kit. They bid it as they purchase material and build it. I think both, I think that's, that's the most clarif- clarification way to do it. Cause sometimes I'd be, I will be honest with you, is is if the kit is something that's gonna be done in a month. Versus them building it could be two and a half months and if we save a lot of money for a month and a half, I'd rather wait a month and a half.
Um, I also wanna clarify, what the kit we're looking at was to match the amphitheater? Yes, so is that?
That, that, I got clarification that the the price here for the kit, the eighty-five thousand, three hundred twenty-five dollars would include a metal roof to match the amphitheater.
And what's on an amphitheater roof right now?
It's uh, maroon tin.
I think you can find maroon tin in Menards.
Which is fine, I just wanted to make sure that we're clarifying on what.
I would just look at the kit, I think we should try to match that building as best that we can. If it's a shade different maroon, I I, big deal, it it's one year and that'll change color. But I still think that you should have a bid out both ways.
For for a stick frame type?
Yep.
So we're looking at option number one. And. No plumbing fixtures is in, Steve, your company was gonna do.
I have to, I have to get the drawing of the building first and get him to, he wants to look at it. But he said he pretty much probably would donate it. I will donate my labor and time and probably the drain waste and vent material, it's just the fixtures are the costly thing. So I have to get, you you gotta go further to get further information on this.
Cause I'm sure definitely that is part of my consideration because the other ones, we have to add plumbing fixtures and if we can't. Pretty much be assured that's gonna happen in the future, then we should maybe go with another option.
No, the, if you look at what that prefab is, that's all stainless steel fixtures, a toilet's probably two grand, dude. So you can buy a lot of porcelain toilets for two grand. So I mean, yeah, that's, I don't see, I understand for vandalism purposes. Okay, you break a toilet. Public Works runs up to Menards and goes, why is that toilet, if we have to?
True, you could buy a lot of toilets.
You can buy a lot of toilets for two grand.
Till the price of a stainless steel one.
Yeah, so I mean, the the other ways around it, I, I'm sure I can make something happen, so.
I didn't, I did have another question about that, um, so someone asked me in the past and I forgot to ask, is that bathroom gonna be locked at night or is it always unlocked?
It would be open during park hours.
Okay, so someone's gonna lock that every night?
Yeah, seven to ten, seven AM to ten PM. I mean, I, we haven't fully discussed that, but I think, I mean, that was kind of the same arrangement at the. Warming house bathrooms on the south end of the BMX building was they were open during um, park hours.
Is there a smart lock option available for that, so you can lock it manually or or remotely or automatically so that we're not paying staff every single night to go lock the doors?
Right, Travis said that was what we had on the BMX building, so we can get that.
Okay.
Originally, we were locking them every night and then switched to some uh, timer system that locked them up, so.
Okay, does that.
If somebody gets trapped in, they can still get out.
Yeah, there's always an out, but that, yeah.
Does that require wifi then?
No, it's, it was just a timer system.
Okay.
Just an actual clock where you, they programmed it, so I think the minimal cost on that compared to staff time is.
So, so we already kind of do have wifi transferring from the Public Works facility to the sledding hill lights. The, those lights are operated by wifi and so it's, the bathroom building would be closer um, than the light poles. So if we needed to have wifi there, we'd be able to send it from Public Works to have a receiver at at the bed, at the bathroom building.
Okay.
Like if people wanting to stay in the bathroom longer than they got a hotspot in there?
And and is that gonna be heated?
No, um, so the the company, all the prefab ones aren't insulated and this company, you can, you could buy a plumbing package, you can buy an insulation package. But uh, talking with Matt Sylvester, you know, then then they, that's one more thing, they've got a monitor all winter long and make sure the heat's on, make sure things, you know, so it's. For the minimal use it would see in the winter, I didn't think it was worth the extra cost.
It's not gonna get used in the wintertime, so there's no reason, just they gotta blow it out in the fall and turn it on in the spring.
Yeah, I just asked for utilities wise, water freezing?
And then the splash pad um, components, like the manifold with all the plumbing for the splash pad will be hosed in like the mechanical uh, area in the bathroom. A lot of the other splash pads, there's like a separate cabinet outside, like a metal cabinet where all that stuff is in, so we can hide it in the bathroom and keep the park looking all cleaner, so.
So I guess the consensus is that we should maybe try and get a stick frame bid from a another contractor as well as this one, was that? Steve, is that what you're?
Yeah, that's what I said, we should get it for, you know, what the kit is versus.
Yep.
That them buying the material and building it.
Yep.
You you're, you're, you're seeing. Prices of materials are coming down because people aren't buying them, you're seeing people all looking for work.
Yep.
Builders trying to find work, cause there is no work. I think we can get ourselves in a lot better savings than you think, so.
So that, that's my motion.
I'll second it.
All right, I have a motion from uh, councilman Merrill and from councilman, a second from councilman Lundine to go out for the two bids. Uh, with both options, uh, and all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries five zero. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries five zero. Moving on to K seven, resolution awarding the bid for the two thousand twenty-three pavement management project.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. So we, uh, we brought this, the, the pavement management plan set out for bids, uh, did a bid opening April twelfth, received two bids. Um, one from Aztec, uh, that's done our, our projects for the last few years, actually, and another from Allied Blacktop. They're both competitive, responsible bids. Um, asphalt, or Aztec, uh, with a bid of three hundred and three thousand, thirty-six dollars and ten cents was their responsible low bidder and we recommend award.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilman Lundine and a second from Councilman Collison. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries five zero. Moving on to K eight, Isani City Hall Roof Replacement.
All right, so this one, we have, uh, two resolutions. I'll try to make this clear because it can get confusing, but basically, the, on, uh, on the thirteenth, we opened beds and, um, this is for hail damage on this roof. We had a base bed, which is just replace the roof, basically as it is, goes back up. Um, then there were three alternates. Um, alternate one was to add heat trace, um, on the existing gutters by each, each entry. Alternate two was to add gutters at the lower roof around the building. And alternate three was to add gutters and heat trace around the building. To be clear, alternate one, two, and three are not a necessity, right? Those are at the council's discretion. The base bid, which is the first resolution we have, has already been approved by the League of Minnesota Cities Insurance Trust, but we do need to still go through the formality of having the council say, yes, we also agree. So that is one we should definitely take action on. The second resolution you have is strictly optional. If we want to choose alternate one or three, we have some other work to do and I can lay that out in the memo if that's the council's desire. If we want to consider option two or alternate two, the council can simply take that action and approve the second resolution. But that would, that one, that one is not obligatory.
So is there a problem with City Hall with the runoff right now?
So the, the biggest problem is at the entries. And so when we did, when we went through the, the specs for the roof, we asked them to change those downspouts and rather than running them this way, go sideways out, get it a little farther away. Um, we're hoping that will help. Um, Josie gave me some direction. She says that basically that if we're gonna consider any alternate, consider alternate two. And she gave three reasons. Um, she said, one, ice removal, the amount of time that staff spends chipping away ice away from the edge around the doors. But perhaps that's mitigated by having the downspouts going in a different direction than they are currently. Um, the other is, um, salt use for the same reason, right? Getting ice around the doors and you start throwing down salt. And now we are on a second round of concrete repairs since this building opened because that's the boat you're in. Um, and she did also note that due to that type of ice buildup adjacent to the entry doors, um, we have had two falls.
Oh, three, you missed mine.
Okay, well, she's, she's.
In the last six years, I took a digger out here and I tell you what, I scrapped my melon and I, there was salt out there.
She did qualify that. She says two, two falls that I'm aware of. So, um, so the one, the, to do the roof, that's paid for by insurance. Um, that's the base bid, the, was it two ninety-five? Um, that one, we, we should take action on that. And then whether or not we want to do an alternate, that's, that's a separate deal. And remember, the alternates, any of those three alternates are on our dime. That's not insurance.
So do you know on the, on the, the est- or the quote that you got, would that be more expensive if we were to say, wait and see if the gutters this year fixed it? Would that be more expensive for them to come back and do it then?
Probably.
I mean, do you know how much?
Yeah.
No idea?
It maybe, it maybe is more expensive, um, but we might also find, I mean, timing is everything, right? When you ask for bids, but also what does the economy look like? If times are slow and you ask somebody to come out and do gutters and they have no other work, guess what? You get a great price. So I think that's kind of a coin flip.
Sure.
I mean, you also look at it, if she says alternate two, would it probably be the better clear pattern? Say twelve thousand dollars, somebody falls out here, twelve thousand dollar lawsuit, that don't even cover the attorney fees.
Right.
Yeah, I would, I would say this is based on, last time we had to redo gutters at the BMX building. Um, I, I thought alternate two was gonna be more than that, to be honest. But, I mean, it does, not to say we should or should not do it, but I, I would, I was gonna guess more.
Sure, I just didn't know if, you know, changing the gutter downspouts, like you said, might, it might fix the problem. So is it worth maybe seeing if it does fix the problem before making the decision? So we'd have next year to, or do we just?
Then you turn around and next year it's twenty-eight thousand.
Could, yeah, it could be. I'm just, it's a discussion point.
I, I think, I think a twelve thousand dollar investment right now is a pretty cheap insurance policy.
But if we end up not having to spend it, it'd be even cheaper.
So if, if not, but what happens if somebody falls and we still need to do it? Now, it's probably fifty, sixty, seventy thousand dollars more?
So to be, to be clear, the, the alt two is gonna give us new gutters across like the length of the building. And yes, we get ice along that stretch. But, I mean, the ice that's the big problem is adjacent to these entry doors on either side. And hopefully, having those downspouts rerouted in a different direction, um, hopefully that will help. And so we're already attempting to mitigate the biggest problem. It's definitely not gonna be the whole situation, but the biggest problem. And that part, the league was perfectly fine. They were like, yeah, we don't care if it goes right or left or, you know, they're like, we don't care, that's fine. So they'll cover that.
So the extra expense is not anything to do with by the doorway?
That part is already in the base bed.
So it's not gonna help anything with the doorway spending this morning?
Cause those gutters are already up. We've just asked them to run those in a different direction.
Yes, I'd be, I'd be okay with the base bid probably is what you're thinking too, I think, right?
No, so he's saying that, are you talking about for the eleven thousand or twelve thousand dollar or just the base of the, just the roof itself?
Well, what the insurance is gonna cover and then with the governor.
Base bid would be, insurance covers it, it's the roof and the, the gutters that are already here on the building go back up, downspouts in a different direction. Anything else is extra money on us and it's either alternate one, two, or three.
Yeah, and see. I'm gonna, I'll, I'll make a motion to approve the base bid and not do anything with the, uh, alternates at this point.
I'll second.
So it's gonna be just like it is now?
It would be very, very, very much like.
Other than facing the gutters in one spot, a different direction. But you're still gonna have ice dams the rest of the way.
We can have ice buildup. Um, we've just not had the ice buildup that we have at the BMX. When I, I, I may be a little jaded on that. I'm I, I've worked at the BMX building and the ice dams over there enough that I'm a little jaded and happy that I don't have quite the same problem on this building.
I have a motion to approve from, uh, was it Councilman Merrill and a second from Councilman Heeman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries five zero. Yeah, let's see where we're at here. On the consent agenda, any questions from anyone on that?
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion to approve from Councilman Lundine and a second from Councilman Collison. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries five zero.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion to adjourn from Councilman Merrill and a second from Councilman Lundine. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries five zero. We are adjourned. We'll get into our committee of the whole meeting here in just a couple of minutes, so. Yep, yep, I'll, I'll wait. We'll just, we'll give you a couple of minutes there. Yep, well.